Hello, the Board of Men. I'm Commissioner Williams. Please call in.
Mr. Roach.
Here.
Mr. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Haddon.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here. We do have a quorum present and we have several guests. Welcome all of our young people. Thank you all for being here. Hope you enjoy. This might be your first time coming to a City Commission meeting, so we're glad to see you come and join us today to be part of it. And just for those that have been here before, this might be boring, but just to go through the rules, we have a section called Citizen Comments, and if people are here that want to talk about an issue, it could be any issue, doesn't have to be on the agenda. Feel free to do so. We allow five minutes for citizens to make those remarks, and the city attorney keeps the time, and when he says it's getting close to five minutes, I will let you know. And then if you could be so kind as to just wrap up, we don't make you stop right at five minutes, but as close as you can. And with that, everybody be respectful to each other. We'll just go around, and if anybody has anything they'd like to talk about in the Citizen Comments, then just let me know, and I'll recognize you. And I believe we can raise your hand, Martha? Ms. Gray, I'm sorry. I don't call you. And just if you don't mind, because the city clerk keeps the record, if you could just give us your name, you don't have to give us your address. And then just let me know what you're picking on, and we could keep getting them.
Martha Gray. And here's a constant issue, which is the old Y. And the reason I'm here is because the old Y keeps coming up at City Commission meetings, work sessions, and Commission meetings. Without any notice to us, apparently last month it came up, it was brought us under New Business by U.S., and we've asked repeatedly to be notified, issues about our property are going to be discussed. It's just starting to feel like pride by anybody, frankly, that we don't get an opportunity to respond. So I guess my specific request for this meeting is, if it's going to be discussed today under any of these items, and it's impossible really to tell, that at the end of this Commission meeting and before the adjournment, that we be given an opportunity to respond. Because, you know, as a lawyer, it feels to me like we're on trial without being notified that we're on trial. We're on trial without being given an opportunity to respond to the comments that are made frequently. I know back in December I came and brought this up, again, not knowing whether it was going to be discussed or not. We had a discussion about it, specifically asked, because it was a big crowd in the room like there is today. Are we through discussing it? And is it going to be discussed anymore at the meeting? If it is, I'll stay. If not, I'll go. And was told, we're done, goodbye. And then when I was safely out here, it was brought up again, which I think is very unfair. So, for that reason, we're here, although as far as we know, we're not on this agenda. But if it's going to be discussed, we would appreciate being over if it's going to be discussed. And if it's discussed, we would appreciate having an opportunity to respond to whatever comments are made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioners want to discuss, and that's not what the closed session is about, by the way. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was gonna bring it up under Old Business.
Oh, okay.
We ask the people to respond.
We'll ask questions.
For the comments.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh.
All right. I'm Eric Wiseman. I am here on a number of issues, but I work particularly with historic preservation around the states, and I represent and work with three distinct nonprofit groups. And today I came before you for a couple of issues, the approved demolition of five historic structures around Frankfurt. That was two weeks ago, the last Monday meeting. I didn't know of this demolition notice beforehand, so as soon as I found out about them, I sort of started making some calls and working on these. And I feel like it may be a little bit of undue haste in pushing forward with these demolitions. In conversations with a couple of the owners, there's quite a bit of movement to do something else with these properties. And particularly one estate, a gentleman, Mr. Philip Booker, had passed away about nine months ago, and his estate has been trying to find something to do to unload some of his properties. This one particularly, I wanted to come before you all and sort of ask for a stay of demolition, if you will, of 90 days, as we're in discussion with the owners to donate that property, as well as another one or two that they have to nonprofit group, who will then find someone to rehabilitate the structures. That one is pretty much a go, and that is the 350 Home Street building that's already been approved for demolition. That was the main one that they have now that's already been approved. They have a few others that are in question, still coming up. Just as this one is an example, the estate had looked into selling these properties, they tried to auction them, they went through a number of auctions, trying to find something to do with these, other than just having them torn down. And they want to see them saved and put back into use for the community for some good, the community revenue, seeing the demolition. So I believe you all have a letter that you sent earlier today from Planning, have been in contact with Gary and Maya, but their letter states that they are willing to donate this property and move forward with that. But particularly, I'd like to ask the Council to maybe consider a certain amount of stay of demolition for the rest of the properties, while I personally explore with my nonprofits something I'd be able to do with them. I've had conversations with an owner of two other properties, these main, right across from the case state, these main properties. Apparently, they're entertaining an offer on those currently, so we're sort of in stops of our discussion, but there is some discussion of entertaining a donation of those properties as well, if nothing else works out, that we can find someone that's, I happen to think that there's always an option, demolition has to be the last course of results, that we can find someone who would be willing to take on some property and put it back into use for the community, rather than demolishing something that, once it's gone, it no longer provides an opportunity to do anything. Wanted to say that we understand that this is, you know, that they've already been approved for demolition, and we understand that the contractor is willing to wait a little while with us, if the Council would request to do so, while we explore some options on these. And particularly, the 350 Home Street is the one I'm asking for action on, although I would like to see some action on all four. I don't see what another 90 days hurts if we can find someone to put properties back into use and have something that goes back on the tax rolls and provides a place to live for somebody who really needs it. So that's the extent of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions if that, I don't know if it's under Old Business or not today.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And we'll have that on the agenda. We'll keep it on the agenda.
We did send Mr. Wiseman's letter to the Commission earlier today. I have spoken with Planning Director Mueller, and from a staff perspective, we do not object to the 90-day delay. There were certain conditions we'd like to work with Mr. Wiseman on, but if the consensus of the Commission is to withhold, we do have permission from the contractor who's to take me down. They will hold their price for 90 days, which is an opportunity. And from a staff perspective, we're okay with the request.
I said you all want to discuss this under Old Business tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there one thing I would like to add? I'll do that.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do it. Anybody else?
We're here to just see Swim Play Frankfurt.
Okay. Just let's state your name for the record.
I'm Rena Warner. This is my daughter Riley.
You said Rena.
Rena, R-E-N-A. Riley plays for the Pink Sox. She started playing softball last year in April for the Parks and Rec team, and we played maybe two months. It's a very short life, you know? And we got picked up by the Pink Sox, which is a traveling team in Lawrenceburg, because there's not one available in Frankfurt. There are now six girls that play from Frankfurt on that travel team. And for the last two months, we've been traveling three days a week out of town to practice, because there's not a facility in town to practice. On Friday nights, we go to Asbury College for batting practice. On Saturday, we go to Champions in Nicholasville for batting practice and for fielding and that type of stuff. And then normally on Sunday, we go back to Champions for the same thing. So we're spending all of our money out of this city, because there's nothing in this city for us to spend money on. And we are in favor of Swim Play Frankfurt, not just the pool, because it's not just the pool that we need. Again, there are six girls from Frankfurt on this team. There are a number of other travel teams in Lawrenceburg, and Lexington, and Georgetown, and Versailles. They could all use this facility. When we get to Nicholasville, it's so crammed in there that you can barely get a practice. When we called for practice on Sunday, we were told it'd be at least 6 o'clock before we could even get in. There's a huge need for this, and you guys really need to consider it.
Thank you. Hope you, it looks like she's gotten shy now.
She's gotten shy.
That's okay. That's all right.
Throw her a pitch, though, she'll hit it. Yes, it is softball. And, you know, the other thing, too, that I'd like to say is, I don't understand, we have the facilities in town, why aren't we having more tournaments? You know, we have to go to Bowling Green, and Versailles, and Georgetown in order to have ASA tournaments. And in Bowling Green, on March 15th, there's a one-day tournament. There's over 50 teams already signed up. There's 18 8U teams. That's 18 8U kids with at least 15 kids on each team. Every hotel in Frankfurt would be packed. So, and that's all the money coming into this city. I don't understand why, if we have the facilities, we're not utilizing those facilities, because right now they just sit empty.
Well, and we encourage you, if someone wants to host a softball tournament, Jim McCarty is...
We've already been contacted about that as well, and our coach is supposed to be contacting the Frankfurt Parks and Rec about that. Some people in Bowling Green would like to bring some tournaments up here.
Great. Thank you. Always good. Thank you for coming and speaking out. Is anybody else?
Matthew.
Go ahead.
I just wanted...
If you don't mind, just state your name.
Sure. Cheryl Meyer. These are my boys. A lot of you probably know my husband Scott. This is Matthew, Gregory, and Steven. And I just want, and I'm gonna pass around my phone, too. You know, I tried to, I was in a hurry when I got home from work. All of these medals, my son has won at other locations, because we do not have this here. He's also very good academically, so it's not just about the sports, okay? I'm very strong about that. But sports teaches them a lot of things. Right now, he's in West Church Archery. It teaches them discipline, and how to problem solve, and, you know, to be calm. And we're, you know, we're lucky. Right now, West Church doesn't have an overabundance where we have a practice facility. But I know the middle schools are having a huge problem this year with not having any practice time. We can't host an archery tournament, because we do not have a facility that's big enough. I brought this shirt. This is where my thousands of dollars are going, and I hate it. Because Frankfurt Fury didn't have enough facilities, we didn't have enough here. I mean, you know, it's great that my kid has this, but I am traveling out of town four nights a week, just like you. You know, my money, you're spending money for food there, you're spending money for hotels there. I mean, it's...
Gas.
Gas, you know? I mean, we have, what, nine? Nine boys on our Versailles team from Frankfurt.
On soccer or archery?
Soccer.
Soccer.
Nine. You know, they run cross-country, which is a great sport. You know, it's another, teaches you discipline, and it's an active sport, but you can only do that so many times. We had all the problems this year with KSP, with using that facility. So some of these medals here, some of the great things that my boys have done, have competed in multiple triathlons, another up-and-coming huge sport that we do not have a facility to do here. The Y has a pool, but we have nowhere for biking and nowhere for them to run. You know, we've done multiple triathlons other places, and they've both medaled. So I just really urge you guys, I understand the need for a pool, and I love it. I want a pool. You know, I mean, the kids all love a pool. But I don't think that you can sustain the community with just a pool. A pool is only open this short span of time. At least if you have the other facilities with it, you're bringing in money year-round. We've spent how much money on indoor soccer, because there is no indoor soccer facility. So I just really urge you guys to think about the community as a whole and growing the community. You know, he's a firefighter here, and we don't have to live here, but we choose to live here because we love it. But I want the same opportunities. We moved here from Western Pennsylvania, and our kids had, or, you know, we had everything close. We had all this there, and that's the one thing that very disappoints me about Frankfurt is, I don't feel that there's enough for my kids activity-wise here. And I hate that I have to go somewhere else, and all of my money's going somewhere else. So, you know, I mean, I want a pool, and that's great, but I think that if we had the other activities behind it to help sustain the pool, because anybody that's owned a pool, they're a money drink. So, you know, if you have something else to help pay for the upkeep of the pool, so please consider it. You know, we've got tons of kids, sports are growing tremendously here. So, you know, please, consider it for the kids.
Thank you, and your helpers did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My friend Adams, I want to speak from a senior citizen's, old folks' perspective on this, that what she just said about something for the young families with children, young people, if they can leave Frankfurt, and you're gonna end up, if you're not careful, a bunch of old retired people like me, who get a state retirement check, and nothing comes out of my check that goes to the city, not a dime, but I get to use everything you have, and I don't have to pay a penny. How about that? You know, all I pay out of my state retirement is federal taxes, not a penny to the city. So you better be mindful of the needs of the younger community. You're gonna end up with a bunch of old folks that cannot sustain this city. Thank you.
Valid point. Very valid.
My name's Mark Harrell, and I've lived in Frankfurt. I've been with my wife 13 years, maybe, something like that. It's our wedding anniversary, too, so it's easy to remember. But I brought my wife Erin, my son Trey, and my daughter Ellie. They are three and six currently, and I am very fearful of, I don't want to lose my weekends to driving to Bowling Green or Northern Kentucky to go to these events, but I also don't want my kids to miss out on that opportunity as well. And one thing I'd like to bring up with my, I've been a teacher at Franklin County Career and Tech for seven years, as the engineering teacher, before moving on to a new job currently this year. The one thing I would love to see that happens at this type of event, and it kind of goes back to what the lady said earlier, is it's not all about sports. You can bring in robotics tournaments, you can bring in academic teams. You know, you could use this facility to hit every kid in our community. You know, there's 6,000 students in the public school system, what, 1,200 maybe in the private, in the city school system. There's 17, you know, there's 7,200 kids out there that need something to do. And I know from experience as a teacher, if there's nothing to do, kids get into trouble. And that's the last thing I want to see for my teaching background, is these, you know, students from birth on up, you know, we couldn't sustain a roller rink, we couldn't sustain Gaddy, you know, Gaddy Pizza. We have to have something here for the youth to draw to. And, you know, it's come to the point where my wife and I are starting to look elsewhere, because there's nothing here for our kids, other than the schools, and they can only do so much. You know, they're not open in the summer, so there's nothing to really engage their minds, whether it be the sports, or academics, or STEM-related activities. So I echo everybody's comments so far, and I really like the senior citizen comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name's Phil Craycraft, and I know several of you guys. I'm a lifelong Frankfurt resident, and I have a five and eight-year-old boy, and a five-year-old daughter, too. But my point, and the thing I'm really attracted to with Swim Play Frankfurt is really not, I mean, I want my kid to have a place to play, but what I really want is to attract people to Frankfurt. Some of you guys know that I work for Sparrow Missions, and one of the things we do is a fundraising event called the Capital City River Dash. And what we've realized in that process is that, once we got people to Frankfurt, in Capital View Park, they're like, wow, this place is really nice. You know, it's got a ton of fields, it's got awesome trails, but no one ever thinks to come to Frankfurt. And, you know, I remember Frankfurt having the All A Soccer Classic. I remember Frankfurt having the Sweet 16 Girls Basketball Tournament here. You know, we used to be a place where people would come and host events, and it feels like we've kind of lost a little grip of that. Some of it is due to facilities. I mean, the All A Classic Soccer has gone to E-Town, or they have a turf facility, or they have the really nice, you know, 20-field facility that I'll take a travel team to this April. But Swim Play Frankfurt gives us a way to attract an event that then can use Capital View Park's fields, or Lakeview's fields. And instead of us trying to individually attract, we can come together as a county and a city, as a collective. And I also, I coach soccer. I coached at Frankfurt Fury for about 10 years. I grew up playing for Western Hills, and this past fall, for the first time ever, I'm driving to Versailles to coach soccer. And I'm gonna clue you in on something. These select soccer, or these select softball, they pay a ton of money.
Hundreds.
And, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna, I'm not gonna argue the economics, I'm just gonna argue that we have to try to figure out a way to bring people to the city, and if it's renting out space to a club soccer team that's gonna pay, you know, whatever per hour to get them here, or bigger picture, hosting an event that uses Swim Play as kind of the hub, you know, I think it's something that we just need to think about longer term, you know, as far as our city is concerned, because I don't want to drive to Versailles, and I'm still trying to figure that all out with an eight-year-old kid. But right now, starting the last week of March, or February, I'm driving to Fong Springs four days in a row, you know, for trainings. And then, you know, basically from the middle of March on, you know, I'm there. And so, like I said, I'm looking at it from an economic standpoint, not just the opportunity to give our kids a place to play, but also a way for our city to generate interest and become a place to come, instead of a place to kind of leave. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bo.
Anybody else?
Who are?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Debbie Schneider. I also have a daughter who is traveling out of town for select soccer. I worked for eight years as a sports coordinator with the Frankfurt YMCA. I can tell you firsthand how many kids are leaving this community for new sports in other towns. And I know how much we're spending to do so. I want my daughter to play here, like my older children do, but without the facilities. You know, and I know how many people call the Y looking for practice space, for all sports, tennis, volleyball, softball, basketball. There's not enough space, especially during the winter. I mean, soccer was looking for gym space to start practicing and conditioning through the winter months. All the schools are taking, basketball, basketball has priority. Upward has this gym. YMCA has this gym. You know, there are a multitude of sports throughout our community, and there is not enough space anywhere for these kids to excel.
Yeah, thank you, too. Just kind of going around, is anybody else? And we just want to let you all know, we thank you for coming in, too. Just so you know, the entire Commission, I will. The entire Commission, everybody here voted five to zero to support moving forward to looking at options on an indoor recreation facility. Whatever that means, to some, might mean something different to others, and so the Commission is working with the county. I think it's gonna be on our March agenda, because we had a meeting last week with Commissioner Haddon, and Commissioner Bowers, and Commissioner Haynes, and Commissioner Roach, and myself, with county officials. And we want that. If you all will look back in the history, the City Commission years ago ranked our top priorities, and we did also a 23-point study with, or a plan with Parks Department. An indoor recreation center is on there. Also, the thing with the pool, we're at point now, so you all will know, that the pool at Union for Hills is, and maybe you all don't know this, because it seems like we're repeating ourselves, but that's okay, because if the State Journal puts articles about this, and then I think Cable 10, if you watch Cable 10, if you can sit through these long meetings, we talked about that. But that's been one of our goals, is to try to figure out how much that's going to cost, who's gonna pay for it, and also what goes into that facility that our Parks Department says that they can sustain in terms of staffing-wise. And so that's going to be looked at, and we're gonna put the RFP out in March. So we invite you all to come back and keep in, stay in the process, and keep in touch with us. Emails are fine, telephone calls, or personal contact is all good, but we appreciate you all being here. And we went through a similar process years ago when we built Capital View Park. It took us probably eight or nine years to get to that point, so we had a lot of folks come in. At that point, we didn't have anything, and people came in, and we built the football, the soccer, and the walk-in, and the bike trails, and some of the other things. So we're, I can tell you, everybody on this Commission wants to do something, especially for young people. We've got a history of our Parks Department reaching out, and our Parks Board making that a priority. So we just want to emphasize that to you. We have listened, and we're working with your old spokes, and trying to figure out what it is we can afford now, and what we could do later. Maybe we can't afford the whole city center at one time, and it could be built in stages. That's what we're gonna look at, to see what we can do. And with the archery, we never dreamed that it would take off to this level without archery park that we have up on top of Cold Spring. It's amazing how many young people are doing that sport. So I think that's interesting to watch, and soccer's always been big. It got bigger back in the 90s here. I'm not sure how football is doing now. I haven't had too many football folks come in talking about indoor football arena, but soccer, I think, is one that, and we're all listening. We'll just let you, the Commissioners here are very concerned with it. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm Jason Joe, and my wife Rachel and I, we've grown up in Frankfurt, and we made a decision long ago that we would stay in Frankfurt, because it's our hometown, it's our community, we're comfortable here, we like the way we grew up here, and we wanted that, we want that for our children. This is my daughter Sawyer, this is my son Merritt over there. Merritt plays indoor soccer, so like everyone else that's saying, we're having to travel to Lexington to do that, would be nice to have a facility here in town. My daughter swims for TNT, and we want to host our home swim meets. We're doing it in Versailles, because there's not a facility here that can house that sort of thing. So I just wanted to put my two cents in, that I'm in favor of it, and I'm excited about the city and the county working together, and I'm very hopeful that a project...
I'm glad to see them working together.
Very hopeful that a project can come out of it. And I do think, I mean, I'm an economics scholar, but there's a lot of support here, and it can bring in money. Lots of people will come if you build it. If you build it, they will come. But, yeah, so I just wanted to say, we love Frankfurt, we want to stay in Frankfurt, and we want Frankfurt to grow, and the Wayton's to grow.
Well, thank you all so much. Go ahead.
Brad Thomas, just want to say, on the Swim Play Frankfurt Facebook page, the last three days, we've had over 3,500 individual people look at our site. These people are interested. These people are ready for our community to step up. The last time our community stepped up for an indoor facility was 1969. Forty-five years is too long. It's time to make something happen. You're seeing the families around this room, every one of them have children. These are the families that are leaving you, since his dad has been there. We've been telling you this for two and a half years. We had the support of the previous City Commission. This Commission gave us support, we were wanting to do it behind the scenes. We got tentative support. Tentative does not build communities. What we've gotta do is, we've gotta work together. We need to work with the city and the county, not with constraints of what current park staffs are, and county this, city that, we've gotta work together to make something happen before it's too late. The dollars you're getting right now in tax revenue is gonna keep decreasing as these families move away. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the Citizen Comments? Go ahead.
My name is Charles Larsmus. This is my son Will. I moved to Frankfurt 14 years ago. Like, you moved here 13 years ago. I moved here 14 years ago. My wife moved here, had Will, he's 10, he's 10, almost 11. Got a two-year-old at home. This facility's really needed in this area to help support Frankfurt, but make sure it grows in the outside area. I coached basketball, I did coach soccer, I got away from that to help out. Anything we could do as a citizen of Frankfurt, we need to do... Anything we can do as a citizen of Frankfurt, we need to do to help support my son, his kids over here, daughter down here, kids over here. That's the future. The older folks is here, you know, we need to support them too, because there's a lot of them want to do different things in this community. And I think we need to step, step back and say, okay, what do we need to do to make this facility grow? Fundraiser helps out, but also, we're in the capital. This capital city should support Frankfurt.
Thank you. And just, I know, could you spell your last name, so we can have a further?
L-A-I-R-S-W.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would like to say something, if that's possible, compared to what everyone said, if they're through.
Yeah, it's okay.
Or do you want to just put in the old business or new business?
Tell you what we'll do, you want to just take old business now?
Yeah.
Take old business now.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for, for showing up and, and voicing these concerns that, that I've been trying to voice. You know, I joke sometimes that I'm one voice for one generation, and that there's, there is a need in this community to build something more than just a pool. And I don't mean just a pool, I mean something more than something that's open three months out of the year. Studies have also been done psychologically, that if kids are given an opportunity in a community, and they're felt like they are given a chance, no matter what it is, whatever, whatever the child does, if it's archery, if it's art, that child appreciates that community, and as that child grows, they come back to that community to try to give back. So, as a city, attempting to work with the county to build something more, we also have to realize that if we want to continue to grow, and we want these kids to come back to open their businesses, to start up, to work here, then we have to start doing this now, because we're losing a lot. We're losing, I would say, 10 years' worth already of kids growing up who aren't going to come back to Frankfurt. You know, I was a kid growing up, I said I would never come back, I came back, and I love it. And I am a transient employee. I work at the hospital, and as the newspaper said, they said that I'm leaving this town. I'm not leaving this town, I'm vested here. Can you not tell that I'm vested here? I own a business here, I run for office here. I'm not leaving, and I'm not giving up on a project either. And I, I just hope that we can move forward with the county to hire somebody to do a feasibility study, to see what we can afford, who we can work with. Hopefully, there's public and private sectors that come together to help build something more. So, hold tight, and hopefully, hopefully we'll get through this, and, and we'll have something within the next three years versus something in the next 15 to 20.
Thank you, Commissioner. You want to stand your old business, and then we'll come back to tentative agenda and staff reports, since we've got so many folks here, just, and you all are always welcome to stay for the other parts of our meetings if you don't want to.
Big time.
We're going to go ahead that way, if you don't want to sit through that stuff, we'll go ahead and do this now, so you don't have to do the other things.
On what Commissioner Henn is talking about, I think that's, you know, we've heard all these pros for building something, and, and if, and if it's feasible, I'm going to be a pro. But, but what we have to do that's the most important thing, is we need to make sure that whatever firm is hired in a collaborative effort with the county in March or in April, that we hire somebody that does a solid feasibility study, that looks at everything, because, you know, I have four kids, mine played on the Fury, mine swam on TNT, and mine went outside of Frankfurt for a variety of things. And believe me, even when we get a recreation center, they're still going to be leaving Frankfurt for a variety of things, because these tournaments are all over. It's one of the reasons why we quit doing it after three or four years, because we were worn out. But, we're going to have to see what, what, what is, what we have now, and how it's being utilized, and then what we, what's the best need, what's the best fit? What do we need under roofs? Do we need soccer, indoor soccer fields? Do we need indoor batting practices? Do we need an indoor pool? Do we, how many indoor tennis courts do we need, if any? In other words, there's a variety of things to look at, and, and then what's it going to cost? The devil is in the details, and I've said that every time. I'm, I'm for this, provided it can be done in a way that we can afford, in a collaborative effort with the county and with other entities. There's a lot of entities too that are involved in this could really help. There's private sector people that I think would give substantial amounts of money, if we're actually promoting it right. And I've said before, the secret to this working is to have a large base of people that pay monthly dues. It's the only way it can work, because regardless of all the money you guys are spending outside of town, it's nowhere near enough to run this place. And we're going to have to have a large base of people with memberships that's, that's funding it. And so, I, I'm, I look forward to the, the study, and I think we'll end up getting a really good report, because we do need something that's transformational for the community. Brad says that all the time. And I do think there's, there's truth to that, which is, you do need something that can, that can stimulate more people to stay here and to move here, because our demographics are largely flat, and that's not, that's not a place you want to be in.
But they've also been flat for years.
Long time. It's in the new problem. It's not like the, it's not like the, you're right, that our demographics have been flat for a long time. And it's not just because we don't have a rec center, I understand that, and there's a variety of factors, state's employment's down, there's a variety of factors, but we've got to look at, and that's why we're doing that study.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else on this? All right, thank you. Next item, we were going to talk about the demolition. We heard from Mr. Wismann about the 90-day grace period, I guess, for lack of a better word. Thank you all. And if you all want to go out, we'll, we'll take a, we'll just kind of pause. Thank you all for coming.
Do you want to kiss the marinas?
Do you want one?
I know you're all looking forward to getting back to school.
We're at the Christian Academy, so we're still going.
That's the only way to go.
Thank you.
Pizza.
If I look at Katie.
We had the secretary, Deputy Secretary of Finance, and Commissioner, we're here to, would you all allow us to go into that closed session, so that, so that we can release them?
Sure.
I didn't hear a thing.
Oh, maybe we go into the closed session?
Oh.
Well, we're going to, we are, we will, but can we, we said we're going to do the, just the demolition thing. Do you all mind? We can dispose of that. Does anybody eject to a 90-day?
I don't.
Is it just the one property, or?
What was this?
That'll tell me where I am.
There were two in the letter. One was 350 homes, and one was 329, 329 and a half, he's second. But according to Planning Director Mueller, that property is not in our demo list right now. It's a second-tier property.
The one, he's second, correct.
Yes. So, I, I believe the only one that we had.
I'd like to ask for all five, just to, like I said, I've had about a week to get in touch with some of these people, and, and I'm starting the process, but we're just not quite sold on those yet, so I don't see what 90 days.
I just wanted to, from the commission, as far as our discussion with contractor, we only spoke about the 350, because that's the one that I had to talk to the owner, representative of the estate.
I'd support a 90-day delay on the one, but not the other four. Does anybody else?
Did you say you had two in the letter?
There are two, but only one is in the five that we have under contract to demo.
I support the 90-day delay on the one, you're talking about 350.
I'll support it.
Okay, so you hit, okay, so that's three, did we?
Five, four.
Well, we're not really voting, but there's at least a majority that would support. So, we can let the staff, we can let this be a staff call, and if you all want to extend it, which it sounds like you do, then I think the commission says, go ahead. Is that right?
Well, are we saying go ahead on just the one, or all five?
They were saying all five.
I'm okay with all five for now.
You need to say one, but I think there, the others, let's clarify that.
And then Tommy said the one, and I said the one.
I will be okay, if you only tell me about 90 days, that the 350, you know, it looks like it's more interest in, in that one. So, I don't have, you know, as cold as it is right now, you know, I'm, I'm not even thinking 30 days from now anyway.
Can I ask you a quick question? Two quick questions. How long have these people been in violation, or haven't paid their taxes, or whatever?
A couple of years, or one.
Okay. How long have they known that they needed to be looking to sell it, or to bring it up to standards, or to try to attract investors to the project?
To my knowledge, a couple of years, or a couple.
Okay. I'm just one, but I'm for just giving the one 90 days, and the rest of them tear them down.
They didn't contact you, Ray?
No.
You went looking for those.
I went looking for them to.
He went looking, they did.
Yeah, I know that, and I know that. Yeah, he's, he's actively involved in that, and I think that's great. I'm just saying, though, if they've had this long, then I think they've had long enough.
But I think if we're trying to do something, to make something better, what you're trying to do is actually have somebody rehab what's there and make it an improvement to the area, which will save us demolition. So, somebody's trying to make something good out of it.
Have you seen pictures of them?
Yeah, but.
Okay.
Here, here's the thing, when you've got citizens that actually want to take what's there and, and make it better, and it takes government out of the picture, us having to spend the money to do all that, I just think it's, I think we need to make use of that. But I'm okay with all five, is what I'm saying. Everybody's definitely okay with the one.
I'm fine with, 90 days isn't going to make that much of a difference, is that from a staff perspective, you all, since you said?
Do you have a comment?
No, I don't believe they're, they're in imminent danger of the neighbors, although the ones on Main Street are very bad. The roof system, and it's collapsed and fallen off, is very dangerous. And there's one on Phillips. Luckily, it's by itself, but it couldn't hold. I'm surprised the roof collapsed that long, because of the smell that we're having.
Did you not say there are probably a couple that could be worth, and then two or three that they're not?
The, it's not Phillips Street, but it's in the same neighborhood. Phillips.
One?
Phillips Street, actually, Sam, and the 350 Home Street is the next best one. The other just don't, in fact, go at all. But if you did want to do all five, I would have to reconfirm with the contractor, because I only spoke to them about the one individual, because that was one, I heard from them.
Let me ask one more question, because I, I may just do the go-along to get-along.
Well, maybe we could just do the two.
Well, let me, let me just ask, is, if, if, if it is just 90 days, and I guess my problem, since I've been here, is, you know, we, we talk about properties and people that don't pay their taxes for multiple years and everything else, and then it just seems to just keep going and going and going, and then it ends up being years. So, I'm fine with going along with everybody, if in 90 days, it's fish or cut bait. And so, I'm, I'll, I'll vote to give 90 days for all five of them, if, 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 if we're, if we're, if we, well, actually, in 90 days, green light the ones that are there, and, and not green light the ones that are not, so that we can get new capital into the community and spruce this thing up. I'm all for renovating places if we're going to be able to get new capital in here, but if we're not, then all we're doing is having an eyesore, which drags down the rest of the property.
Could I?
Okay.
Could I say anything? I just wanted to say that, you know, I completely understand that three of these are in pretty rough shape, although being in this field, I've seen much worse, or fixed up much better.
I've been surprised.
I want to say that, you know, on my behalf, I've been working with these people, I want to bring you all a contract that states, you know, this is what's going to happen, and we have this certain timeframe, and if not, then, then I'm willing to concede that these are, we move forward, so.
Wants to do it right.
Provide the documentation of things that we need to.
Wants to do it right.
And if it looks like with staff determination, if it does become a safety issue, then that changes, can we just authorize the staff to say, to make that decision? If it's a safety issue, then that becomes number one priority. Okay. All right, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
I saw the Barstow House, it just, that I, I think the commission, we thought that the property down on, it's connected to the History Center. I'm going, like.
I know.
High Street.
Really?
And just was completely amazed at how that was. If you saw the pictures before, you would think there's no it's going to happen, and it did, but the inside wasn't, but the outside still stayed there. So, that was, you can do that? I've seen miracles, not only miracles, but amazing work. All right, now, going back to this, do you all mind if we do the?
Okay, so what we decided on that one is, we're going to do the 90-day, unless the staff finds that it's so dangerous that, but two of them, Gary, you think are okay for 90 days? Willow and home?
Yes.
Okay. So, definitely two, and the other three are going to be kind of at the discretion of staff? Okay.
So, we're going to go back to other old business after we go into a closed session?
If you all don't mind.
Maybe we go into closed session?
Just talking about Commissioner Bowers, closed session for 61, 80, 10, 11, so we need to discuss property. Second, about Commissioner Roach, any discussion?
Yes, just to clarify, the people who are waiting.
Yes, we are coming back.
That, we're going into closed session, we're kind of moving our agenda around. Mayor, do you want to discuss, tell everyone what our agenda's, how it's changing, so if they're waiting to hear something?
We're going to go back, and we'll have the discussion of the tentative agenda for the 24th voting meeting, and then also, we're passing over the other, any other old business or new business, and all the discussion items, until we can do this hopefully short, relatively short closed session on the, on the property issue.
And Mayor, are you going to do staff reports when we come back?
Okay.
Did you already say, you already?
61, intensive ones.
Said that the closed session on property will not involve any of the issues that are here tonight.
Right, right.
So, okay.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Stay in, I wish for every single, about the same eye.
Eye.
Those opposed, like, majority, unanimous five. All right, we'll do that.
Will we go back into open session?
Second, about Commissioner Henn, second about Commissioner.
Ten.
Any discussion, stay in, always, pretty soon, 10, 11, those opposed, like.
Are the, is the room full of people not recording? The door's not opening. They're all hanging out. Let's see, what time is it? What time is it? 6:23. It'll be at 10.
All right, we left off at discussion of tentative agenda. We're in old business, so do you want to just finish up old business first?
Yep.
You said you had some old business?
Yes, sir. I can go last, if any of the other people have anything. You know, I always got something.
Always met times.
Okay. Okay. She's just picking.
One old business thing I'd, I'd like for us to do is the, on the stormwater, where we had the joint meeting with the county, I think we, I think there were two, two options in our packet for the MS4 plan. One was, one was what it would cost to fund it through raising taxes, either property taxes or occupational taxes. Another one was how to fund it through a utility fee, whether it be $4, $5, or I think their recommended amount was $5.60. I would like for us to come up with a plan that we could look at that doesn't require raising taxes or having a utility fee, so the plan would have to utilize spending cuts, further prioritization of the projects that we have, perhaps stretching them out on how they're done, a cost-benefit analysis of the projects where possible. I know some of that's not possible, having talked to Tom and Tim. And just to give us another all- And just to give us another alternative for that, and there may be a better way to phrase it than what I phrased it, but I'd like to see us look at another alternative besides raising taxes or having a fee.
Is there an alternative? I mean, I would like to find one, too, but I'm...
Well, I think you'd have to touch spending.
I think we'll have to get to, like I'm staff, we're going to have to get an idea of how much we're talking about dollar-wise to accommodate the amount of stormwater that we're having to separate. So, I don't know if we have that available yet. As far as I know, we're having...
We've got some numbers that are in the presentation, like the bond issuance is approximately three hundred thousand. I think the NPDS permit is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. We've got maintenance for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So, you're looking at six to eight hundred thousand dollars to operate that utility, the minimum. We were estimating one point two million from the four-dollar fee, the lower of the two fees. But I think there was some additional capital in there, but I would guess you're looking at maybe even above eight hundred thousand annually a year.
Well, I'd just ask for something that would show us how to do that without doing those two things. I realize is, where's the chief? Is he here? Chief of Police? As the chief said a couple of meetings ago, when we talked about some things, that if you had to... That if you did that, that might lead to the cutting services, and that might. I'm not saying that we have eight hundred thousand dollars that we can find, but I'd like for the staff to look and see what they would recommend if we did that.
Did you hide that much money? Did you hide eight hundred thousand dollars?
No, I wish I did.
Tell me.
Is that a consensus?
Well, I think any commissioner can ask staff to do... We don't have to get consensus from us. If commissioners send you a service order or request, I mean, I'd...
We were looking...
But I think, yeah, but I think it's... I don't think they commit... Does any of the commission object?
Well, I don't object, but I definitely, if there's another alternative, I definitely don't want to do taxes. The utility fee that they looked at, they only gave really those three options. So, if there's another alternative, you know, I definitely would rather do it that way. But the one that they showed under the utility fee did seem to spread a broad base. And if something like this has to be done that we're directed to do, we can only do it by a broad base. And I don't want us taking the city, taking such a hit that we can't provide services, because I think that's our main job here. I'd love to be the biggest stormwater chief, but it has to be done.
So, we'll just wait for staff to come back, if any available.
I just would just like to add, I don't think there's any, like... I don't think we're irresponsibly expending taxpayer money at this point. We've been looking at cutbacks ever since, and that was one of their priorities, was look for places we can cut. And I don't think we're being frivolous with anything right now. I know we've actually had position cuts, which, to me, were not a good idea. So, I just don't see how we can cut back much. But I mean, if they want to look, but they're supposed to already be looking for those, according to some of our goals that we...
There's a difference between looking and then having to come up with, because that's an option that you have to...
Right.
You know, I think that's a different thing. And then, you know, the question you have to ask yourself, and I... Is how much... How much do we want to continue to, you know, raise fees on cost of capital? You know, there is... It's not inelastic. This may not cause any kind of a problem, but the... But our thinking that we believe that government is inelastic, and that there is no limit to what... Or elastic, excuse me, that there's no limit to how much we can continue to raise fees and taxes and property taxes, it's a myth.
Yeah, and I just think we need to be really careful with what we choose to do. We have to prioritize...
And I'm not saying that we don't need to do something different, but I think we need to look at all the options and then make a choice.
Well, and there's one thing about the fee, the utility fee. It's going just for that, and people know that's what it's going for, and they know that's how their money's being spent. They know it has to be spent on that, and to me, that makes... I don't want to do anything about raising just tax for the general funds. But if you know that that's what that fee is for, and that's the only way that it can be spent, as a taxpayer, that makes me feel more comfortable. I don't want police protection cut anymore. I don't want fire protection cut. I don't want those basic services cut that I think we're all entitled to, and I don't know where else we can do that. But, you know, they can look.
Well, we'll just wait till you talk to them.
Okay.
No, sir.
About seven minutes.
Oh, yeah, no, but...
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
On the old Y, thank you all for being here.
Thank you for inviting us.
Well, I don't know that that's our role to invite you, but I can tell from the comments. I have brought that up a couple of times. I have brought it up because I believe that... And I've said this on a variety of things, whether it's buildings that haven't paid taxes for multiple years, or buildings that are not being renovated, and not having capital being put to use, that over, after a period of time, we need to act and either have it done or tear it down. I am a preservationist, but I think this has gone on long enough. I believe the buildings needs to be restored or torn down. So, that's all I've said, and I would say the same thing. And I guess the... And based on the long history of this building, and since your ownership, and since your meeting with us, where you said you have a financing plan in place by the fall of two thousand thirteen, of which you never reported on one that I know of, and the fact that you got a grant, and, I mean, you applied for a grant and didn't get it, the fact that we were supposed to get a plan in two thousand eight, a definite plan in one year, about how you would renovate the project, and we didn't get that either. My thinking is it needs to be torn down, or I would be... And I don't know what all the legal ins and outs are, that's what the city attorney would do. But, you know, I would propose to you guys that if you want more time, that you escrow the amount of what the demolition would cost. We would give you six months or a year's period of time to get everything in order, and then if it's not, then the escrow would pay to demolish it, so the taxpayer doesn't have to pay for it. Because that's the way it's going now.
You want to do it for someone?
Well, we can ask.
Can I speak?
I'll ask you a question, so we can make it work. Would you mind responding to the question about, as Commissioner Roach asked, about the financing timeline?
Well, I guess what I'd like to do is make a statement...
Say for you, for Mrs. Gray, too.
My name is John Gray, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the old Y. And it seems to me that demolition is Frankfurt's version of Moby Dick, where the irrational obsession, instead of being a great white whale, is historic buildings. I don't know how many of you ever watched Cable Ten, but just recently, Russ Hatter had a program on lost Frankfurt, buildings that have been demolished over the years. Notably among those, the Capitol Theater.
That's what I thought that...
I'm sorry. Yeah, just...
I just want to say, it's sixteen, I really fought that demolition at sixteen, but nobody listens to me. Okay.
Is this going to answer the question?
Eventually.
I wouldn't like to hear...
I'm fine with letting him speak.
I mean, this is America.
So they say.
I mean, I think this is a perfect example. You know, we've asked you repeatedly to notify us or give us some idea if you're going to discuss the building. Like I said, I came in in December, discussed it, asked you specifically here to discuss it before I left, and you said no, and you did. You've had plenty of time to say whatever you wanted to on this issue. You've had other people come in basically as witnesses against us. You've never once asked us where we are in this process. My husband's here to give you some explanation, and you want to cut him off. I mean, this is just hard for the course, and it is picking me up so badly.
Let me say this, I think what Commissioner Roach was saying, because of our rules of procedure, he was just asking me a question about it.
Well, what he said was, is this, you know, again, you want to shut down any conversation. You want to shut down our ability to say much about our building at all. And you've made lots of representations without really having much in the way of facts, without even asking us what the facts are.
Well, I think you've made a number of them as well, but I'm... Whatever the commission wants to do as far as giving time, I'm fine with.
Thank you.
But let me say, well, go ahead, Mr. Gray, I'm sorry.
There've been any number of buildings that Frankfurt was anxious to tear down. The Glenn Willis House, the Achilles Sneed House, the Barstow House that the mayor mentioned earlier, the Owlesley House, the Goodman House, Newnans. All of those buildings were slated for demolition because they were in disrepair. People thought it had taken whoever the owner was too long to repair those. All of those buildings have been saved. You know, this obsession has led to filing a criminal complaint against me individually, a complaint that's procedurally deficient, that has no basis of fact on the merits, and actually amounts to an abusive process. We now hear that the city attorney and the city manager have been looked... Have been asked to look at options on how to get the building demolished, the old Y demolished. The how is clearly spelled out in the city's ordinances. The why, I think the answer to why this is being done is, again, this obsession for demolition. If the building's torn down, what will Frankfurt get? It will get nothing. If it's saved, you will have saved an important historic landmark. You will have created a tourism attraction. You will have added to the revitalization of Bridge Street. You will have contributed to the revitalization of the riverfront. You will have created a project that will create jobs and generate tax revenue. If the building's torn down, the city is going to have to foot the bill for the demolition. And I guess I've heard estimates that it would cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for demolishing the building. We've owned the building for seven years, but that ignores the fact that the city let the building sit and deteriorate for the previous thirty years. It also ignores the fact that there was a fire downtown that burned two of our buildings to the ground and damaged three others. It has taken time and money to repair the damage, but we are about to complete the renovation of the fifth and final building. We've renovated ten historic buildings in downtown Frankfurt, and what were once vacant and deteriorating buildings are now home to Seraphini Restaurant, La Fiesta Restaurant, Kentucky Coffee Shop, the Old Capital Antifa Small. And there are ten upscale apartments above these renovated buildings that have helped make downtown Frankfurt a residential community. Rather than being surprised by having our building discussed without any notice to us, we've been invited by certain members of the commission to come to one of your March meetings and actually bring our renovation team, our developer, our architect, our structural engineer, and the people that would actually manage the old Bryant's Gate when it's converted into a boutique hotel. And I think that the question should not be, how long has a building been vacant? But is there a reasonable chance that it can be renovated? And we intend to explain that to you at the March meeting. Not prepared to do that tonight, because, again, we didn't have any notice that this was going to be discussed. And I'd like to say that what's going on has a really negative impact, because as we've gone outside of Frankfurt to talk to bankers and financiers and developers, we found, which I guess we knew all along, is that Frankfurt has a real negative image outside of Frankfurt, and probably within Frankfurt, too. And what financiers, business people have told us is, why would we want to invest any money in Frankfurt? Your own city doesn't support this project. We did apply for a community development block grant, a five hundred thousand dollar grant that wasn't going to cost the city any money at all. It would have helped us bring the building up to code. We were told when we filed our application that it was one of the best applications that they received, but it wasn't approved. And when we went back to ask them, well, what happened? You told us it was a good application. We were told off the record, well, your own city didn't approve... Your own... The city didn't even support it. So, the things that you do in here have impact, not only on us and our projects, but on the image that Frankfurt has. And I can tell you that, having talked to people outside of Frankfurt, people that are in a position to know, they read the paper, they hear things, and Frankfurt just has a very, very negative... A very, very negative image. And like I said, what's going on here today just adds to that.
Thank you.
So, I guess in answer to Commissioner Roach's question, no, we're not going to put any money in escrow to cover the demolition of the building.
So, you're going to have the taxpayer pay for it?
Well, no, not if you don't care a damn. And I would like to make one, or well, just a couple of comments. One is, you keep talking about the history of the building. The building hasn't been rehabbed. The building's not intact, as though the building could rehab itself. The relevant history is not the history of the building. The relevant history, if you think it's relevant at all, is our history. And there has not been a single instance in eleven, the tens, the ten other buildings, where we have failed to do precisely what we said we were going to do at the end, even if it took longer than expected. If you want to talk about one of those buildings down the street, we bought it because the owner didn't have enough money to fix it up after it burned to the ground. The only salvageable part of that building was the facade. It was staked up with big stakes from the sidewalk, so it wouldn't fall over. The back of it was dirt and gravel and debris. That... We got that building in two thousand six, eight. It is... And that building's a fourth of the size and doesn't require us to start a business in it to get it rehabbed. It is only now being completed. And why is that? Well, what happened in two thousand and eight? The market crashed. Financing is extremely difficult to come by. We're talking... Well, but, you know, it seems to me that your perspective is, it's like punishment. You've had long enough, let's tear it down. Well, that hurts us, but it hurts Frankfurt. You had all these people come in here earlier for Swim Play Frankfurt. What were they all telling you? That your policies and the way you approach things drive people out of this community. People that... People that live here, that take...
We're way past the time.
Well, I don't care. You have plenty of time to talk about it.
I haven't talked as long as this on it, but go ahead.
Well, you have collectively, over time, out of our presence, even when I asked you if you were going to do it. You... The policies that this city pursues, it drives people out of the city. They spend the money that they make here somewhere else. It stops people from investing in this community, and I've been in on those meetings. And that's precisely what these people say. Well, I'm not sure if I want to invest in Frankfurt, because frankly, we don't think Frankfurt's a business-friendly place. And this is a perfect example of that. You've got private citizens who are going to obtain private money to fix up a building. It will happen, it's not happening on your timetable, and all you can think is, well, I want it torn down. I'm sick of looking at it, I want it down. Well, what does that do? Yeah, it hurts us, but you sit here and you talk about having no money. You talk about problems with taxes. You wouldn't have to raise the tax rate one way. You'd have more taxes if you have a building over there that's drawing in tourists, that's employing people, that's paying property taxes, but that's not the way that this project is thought. I mean, it just... It's unbelievable. You've got a cash cow sitting there for the city. And the limited thinking is, is, well, you know, we're done, time to tear it down. You know, you don't even seem... Seemingly don't even seem to care where we are in the financing process. Nobody's asked us that in a year. And to say that we told you we would have financing in place...
You said you'd have a package to show us in the fall of two thousand thirteen.
We said that we would know whether... Know in the fall of two thirteen, twenty thirteen, whether it looked like we were going to finance it or not. And we, in fact, got a term sheet from the bank saying, we'll lend you up to five million dollars if you complete this process. We're in the middle of that process, and you're saying you want to tear it down, and you want us to escrow two hundred thousand dollars to do it.
Probably a little more.
Well, I mean, yeah, we're not going to escrow two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, ma'am, first off, I agree with you as far as making the community more business-friendly. That's... I've talked a lot about that, too, and so I agree with that.
Then how does this do that?
Well, if you give me a chance. I believe that, and I've said this, that, you know, there's really not much point in having a code enforcement organization if, when people don't follow it, and then they don't make corrections, and we just let it go. don't make corrections, and we just let it go indefinitely.
Yeah, but you let it go for 30 years, then we got it.
I don't want to do like the back and forth.
No, I don't either. Just let Commissioner Roach.
And so I believe that we've come to a point in time where this project is not going to come to fruition. You all are not following the code, and so therefore it needs to be torn down. But I'm just one person. I believe there are all kinds of reasons why it won't work from a business perspective, but I trust you all's business acumen. You've got a whole bunch of stuff going on downtown that I do not. But I believe that the things that you have said, you have not followed as far as the timeline. I believe we've given it enough time that it's an eyesore and needs to be demolished. But that's one person's opinion.
Well, I think it's a short-sighted opinion, and I think it totally ignores...
Let me say one thing. I don't want to...like, just don't address like Commissioner, address like Commissioner and not like directly to Commissioner because I can't...I really don't want Commissioners getting singled out on issues like that.
I guess, once again, we will make every effort to get our team members here in March. We have every intention of rehabbing this building and doing with it precisely what we said we would do. I'm sorry it's not on the timetable that you like, but I don't think that that means in any way, shape, or form that it's not going to happen. I think we have a solid history of doing those things. Again, we thought we'd be finished with this building down the street long before now, and that was a financing problem.
So, Ken, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I think what I'm hearing is, and I, you know, I used to swim in that building, and I, too, hate seeing the old historical buildings go. And I, too, know that you all have a history of actually improving the properties that you have. And I, too, know that it sat there vacant since I was, what, 10 years old, 12 years old, with nobody caring that it was an eyesore, and nobody having any plan to make it not an eyesore. Now we have somebody that has a plan, and we have somebody that wants to rehab that building and make it an asset to this whole corner in here to help those businesses that have gone up across the street. And if the building comes down, nothing can be put back there. So, once again, we have citizens, private citizens, that want to contribute to the city, but we're more willing to entertain people that want us to pay out of everybody's taxes. We want to do things that's going to cost every taxpayer ahead of letting a private citizen do something for the city. And I would like to see that building rehabbed, and I would like to have a little hotel in there with a restaurant in the bottom. And I am all for giving the Grays time to do that because I've seen what they've done downtown, and I've seen that...I have seen, not seen, I have seen, that they have contributed to our downtown. And it would be more...one more contribution. And actually, the building I think that we're talking about now, to me, is worth a lot more than what they've already rehabbed, if it's done well. And so we're going to tear something down that we can't put in its place. And I just...I think it's bad when citizens want to do something for that's going to actually help the city, and we say no, but yet we entertain ideas of expending taxpayer money to do the same thing, to rehab areas. I think that...I'm all willing to come back in March and talk to the team and see what the team has to tell us. I know I met with you guys back in January or February earlier. We met with the city manager, looked at the plans, or looked at what we think it might look like. I want to see it happen, and I want it to be done privately. I don't think government should be tasked with doing everything that happens in any community. I think when citizens get involved and want to do projects like this, it's just a statement that you have caring, involve citizens, and that's what I want in Frankfort, and so I don't want to shut that off. And realistically, Mr. Mayor, private citizens can't rehab everything all at one time. They don't have all the money to do everything at once, so I think they've been doing project after project, and I've seen the latest one about six or eight weeks ago. So I think we need to hold off and allow something good to happen there that we don't have to pay for.
So, Mark's 10th work session, we'll devote a work session, an agenda item, to bringing in the financial package or whatever you want to present to us, to let the commission know and then at some point if there can be a discussion on timeframes and if that's going to go past...I don't know what the commission's threshold is in terms of how much longer...
Well, previous commissions have given them deadlines, they haven't been met. So if y'all tell me whatever you want, how long you want to wait, I guess we can find out at the March meeting. Two years, 10 years, 15, whatever.
Well, may I also just add this? Also heard that they're having trouble with financing because the perception is out there that this city's not behind that. And so if that indeed is true, and have no reason to doubt it, maybe this commission needs to take a step to show support for that. We do resolutions all the time. Maybe we need another one. Maybe you need to draft a resolution and bring it to us to have us vote on.
What are we saying?
Here's the thing, Commissioner Roach, I know what you're saying. People get tired of looking at it. I have had comments made to me...
Well, y'all hoped in 2007 to get one more year.
When are they going to tear that down? I hear it, too. But what I also...you all probably got this same email recently, was an email telling us to tear it down and put something back. So I don't think the public understands that when it's torn down, nothing can be put back. So I think that people don't want it to look like it is, but people want something there, I think, I believe.
Let me let Commissioner Haynes say something, then we'll just say, since we're going to do this on Mark's 10th, we're almost...
And that's actually what I wanted to say. I was the one that wanted to make sure that they came and presented with the people that they have on board, because I wasn't looking at the old why in 2007, even though I was here. So I have the data, but I didn't know the procedures of how to make sure we got them here at a date that this could be discussed, you know, so that we can see where we are from here going forward. So I think we're now there, and I'm glad to see that it worked out. Hopefully, March will work for the people that you need to bring in. I guess that's about a month.
Who says that?
Exactly. Twenty...well, four weeks. So we'll come back and we thank you all.
Just one comment, along with Commissioner Bowers said, you know, these public work projects that you talked about are all admirable, and we would all like to see them happen. And we'd like...but they do cost tax dollars, and it seems to me that some thought ought to be given to, okay, what private...how can we grow our private economy so that we can support these public works projects that we'd like to have here? And the thing that seems to be missing is, and I'm not saying this across the board, but the thing that sometimes seems to be missing is giving any thought to, we need private enterprise to support tax fund that will support the public works projects that we all like this, that would be...make this community a better place for everybody.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Okay, so we'll see how Mark's chance with the whole team, right?
We can get down here.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, what about any other old business?
Are you done? I had some.
Commissioner Haynes?
At our last meeting in regard to Jennifer Hill's pool, that it was also set up to be a conceptual design. I was told that the company will be at our next meeting, Howard's, the voting meeting, and I'm going to ask that item 7.9 comes off the consent calendar, I'll ask it at the time. But were we ever...were we able to get any information back that Commissioner Bowers asked, which, about trying to...the cost of...
Enclosing.
Enclosing the 25-meter pool?
We're going to get that.
Okay, because I don't want to...I don't want to vote on something if it's still conceptual, and there's still citizens asking if any part of it is going to be open year round. We have that idea of the playground, but if it's still conceptual, conceptual, then does it make sense to have a thought process of maybe having part of it enclosed? What the price of that would be compared to what we have right now, since we're paying this company?
It's going to cost a lot more money to run.
Well, just...and just the 25-meter pool aspect, too?
Yes, it's going to cost more money to run.
Well, yeah, and it's going to cost more because you're going to run it year-round versus just three months out of the year.
Yes, it's going to cost a lot more. I don't know how many people will use that year round. You know, the things that are going to bring money to the community, and we can...and we'll get some costs, but the lazy river is going to bring families.
Right.
The sponge pool is going to bring families. The splash pad is going to bring families, and the zero debt is going to bring families back to Frankfort. Now, the 25-meter pool will bring some money in, but it's not going to bring up as much money as those other components. Now, if we try to enclose it, I'm just going to say, if it's going to be 600, 800, a million dollars, enclose it, we're going to have to take something else or come up with more money.
Right. And I understand that.
I don't think we can take the components away that are going to bring money in that's going to pay for that pool, because the pool is going to make money. I believe it will make money. It'll make a lot of money, but it will make money. The other pools that we, me and Jim, visited do make money. They're not money losers. They make a little money, 10, 12, 15...
Right, and it's easy to control cost, again, if you're only going to be open three months out of the year.
If you have something indoors, you all are going to have to give more money.
Right. So I'm just asking if we can get the company to give us a price of what it would be...
Enclosed?
Of what the price difference would be if we enclosed the 25-meter pool.
Okay.
And what...yeah, what the county said was, is they might be willing to work on that part for us.
Versus just...
But I think they're talking about a bubble, which...
I don't think a bubble's a good...I'm not...
Right, right. So I just want to know...
I don't think a bubble's a good idea to put on something.
I mean, I work...I work with rehab patients every day, and a lot of them say, well, I need a pool to go to. So it's not like there's not a population that wouldn't attend.
But what I'm saying...
But I understand the cost. Most people who run a pool out of the year are going to be $250,000 negative, if not more.
An indoor pool, you're right.
For an indoor pool.
The indoor part will lose money.
You will lose it.
If you're just going to have an indoor pool, have a few swimming pools, and a few lap people swimming, you're taking employees, flooring, and whatever, maintaining that pool, you're going to lose a lot of money. What we have presented is something that's not going to lose a lot of money.
Right.
It's going to make some money. We believe it will make money. Now, if you want to get a pool like we have now and lose money, that's up to you all.
Right.
But what we presented is something that will make money. So that'll be a decision, you know, you all have to make, but we'll get you some figures. But what we're trying to do is have a facility that will make money and not lose $150,000.
Or more.
Or more.
So, Commissioner, did you want to just request, if there's no objection, and since the commissioner wants to discuss this, can we just take 7.9 and put it under...put it under old business?
Yes.
So it'll still get...it just means it's just not...
I just need some clarification on one thing, because the bubble of enclosing is separate than what was presented and what we voted on. So even taking it off, unclear...
Oh, it's not coming off, we're just putting it under old business, so it'd be a discussion.
So we want to be considered in the bubble of enclosing. Because that was something like fiscal court said that they may consider, which they're going to consider a little down farther down the road. We'll meet in two weeks. I just...I'm trying to...
You don't know where to go process-wise.
Okay.
Right.
Well, just to clarify, that by taking it off the consent calendar will allow us to discuss it openly. If it's on the consent calendar, that means we don't discuss it. I think that's what Commissioner...
To discuss.
Yes, at least discuss it. We can see the numbers or what numbers might be, if it's worth it, if it's not worth it.
And you can get them in that amount of time. Yeah, they're coming to the...
Okay.
Because there is...there is citizen concerns wanting more, and having a price breakdown for that, for clarification, is just nice. And if it's something this company can do, then I just want to ask them to do it, because Commissioner Bowers did ask for that as well at the last meeting.
But we'll have some kind of cost assessment for that.
I appreciate it.
But I was just saying, I was trying to explain, that's what we presented. We're hoping something that will make money.
Right.
Not lose money.
Right. I mean, that's what everybody wants.
And it's not going to lose money. I mean, that's just the way it is. It's not going to pay for it just to enclose the 25 meters. But we'll have some cost figures. All we want is something for firms. Where would that be?
Right.
How to come aboard.
Right.
We want an indoor facility. We want it all.
Right.
I can promise you, me and Jim, just give us a check, but we'll bet you something you won't believe.
Right. Any private business would love to have a write-off, though, you know? You can't really have a write-off attached to it.
You've got to pay for it, you've got to run.
A belladry for bicarbonate.
But we'll have something for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll put that under old business, and the commission can still vote to move forward on that.
Yes.
And it's down schedule, and if there's issues that come up.
Special meaning.
All right, do you have anything else?
Under old business, no.
Anybody else?
Not under old.
At least there's new.
Well, anyway, we'll go down to new business, and we still have the discussion, the staff reports, and the other agenda items.
They are...do we want to go ahead and have the Humane Society discuss it while Mr. Marcus is here?
Yes.
Glad you pointed it out. Yes, Mr. Marcus is here.
Sorry.
Sorry. I've been getting tired. Mad join us.
Please.
Thank you for being patient.
Well, this is good. I've heard some great things, because you can take $250,000, if you're not going to use on the demolition of the why, and the $150,000 not to operate a year-round indoor pool, that's $400,000 that can go for the new shell. So hang on to that, hang on to that money.
The old why's going to be a dog. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's a joke.
We're calling them All-Americans now, by the way. In honor of the Westminster Incorporated mutts.
I missed that.
Yeah, mutts are doing agility, and they call them All-American dogs. Well, thank you all for offering me to be here. Representative Humane Society, I'm Sam Marcus. I think I know everybody, but for the record, got a packet that, thanks to Tim and Ramona, put together for you, and a cover letter which explains our request for the service contract funding, and some other figures, an update on the Humane Society for the last couple of years. And then some statistics of intake animals over the last year and a half, and also the funding levels for at least that time period. And that forms the basis for our request, and our request for the contract. And we're talking about, just to be clear, we're talking about a new contract because we're operating under a contract currently that was written in 2007, went into effect in 2007, and was actually designed to expire in July of 2009. So we're almost five years into expiration, technically. Although it does have a provision that it continues in effect unless there's a 90-day cancellation. But clearly, it's time for a new contract. And so what's at issue is our request for that contract, and that request is for $75,000. And you'll see in the letter that $75,000 was actually the lowest cost that we could determine, that we felt that our actual cost, and this is based on the direct services we provide the city. So this is based on the fact that in fiscal year 2012, 2013, the city ACO brought us 569 animals, and in calendar year 2013, the city ACO brought us 590 animals. So you all are consistently bringing us 29% of our animals, but your current budget, your current budget, your current contract pays us 14% of our budget. In addition, you're bringing us 29% of our animals relative to the county, which is bringing us 9 to 10% of our animals. The county is paying us $52,000 a year. Now, we figure that our cost per animal per day is around $7, and I think, and I didn't mean to put our budget director, city budget director on the spot, but finance director, but I think you agreed that those figures sounded about accurate.
Yeah, we were in the numbers specs early years ago.
$7 is a workable figure. Even at that $7 figure, and with 500 animals a year, if you brought us that, that would still be $98,000. So even our request of $75,000 is still well below our actual cost of services, direct services to the city. And again, we're talking about a contract. We're not talking about, oh, the Humane Society is a community service agency. We are, but that's a dual purpose that we feel, because we don't just do direct services[1756.25] We are, but that's a dual purpose that we feel, because we don't just do direct services for the city and for the county. We do it for the community. So you bring us five-hundred-and-seventy to five-hundred-and-ninety animals. The county brings us two-hundred animals. But the citizens bring us another twelve-hundred animals. And you're not paying us anything for that. And so with that, I'm open to questions, discussion, anything I can do to assist you in the process. I didn't expect you to make a decision tonight, but if you'd like to and approve it, that'd be great.
Commissioner, last question, but did this solicit you to give us some technical information for the commission's agenda?
Technical information is, I think it is time to have a new written contract that assessed forth in more detail what the city expects of the Humane Society, and what the Humane Society expects of the city. And that's been prepared with some blanks for amounts, so...
I'm not sure which commissioner had their hand up first.
Okay. How much of this funding do you also need based upon your relocation? Is that part of why this is coming up?
This really has nothing to do with the, with the relocation. And at the present time, we don't have a request for, relative to the relocation from the city anyway.
I guess one thing I would like to see in the contract is a lot of neighborhoods, especially the Arnold Rich, who just had their meeting last week, I would just like to make sure that something's set up that you're not going to move right behind a neighborhood and a school in order for us to increase your funding. That you would go more to an industrial-type lot. But I'm just one.
Do you have any further?
Well, I don't think, I mean, maybe, should I respond? I don't think the issue of the funding should have anything to do with our location, because what we're talking about is the direct services that we provide the city under the contract. You ask us to take in the animals that the city ACO brings us and to care for those animals. And you do that consistently at a level of five, close to six-hundred animals per year. We provide those services, so our request is that we're, we're paid something approximating our actual costs. We're not even asking for our actual costs. And so, you know, I don't see the relevance to, to where we're located or any contingency being based on our location or, or a proposed location.
And, and you may not, but when you're called to a meeting, and there's an entire neighborhood sitting in a cafeteria of a school saying that this is an issue to them, then as an elected official, my job is to make sure their voice is heard.
You know we haven't said we'd go there, right? That that was a total mis...
Well, it could be, but it's also, it also could be that you also don't get the jail land.
But we did say, but we, we never said we were going there. I mean, that, that I think was clarified here this weekend, hopefully.
And hopefully it is, but it might be the only land you're, you might get stuck with, but I don't, I don't know. I, I would just like to add, add some wording to an agreement, that's all.
Commissioner.
Sure, four quick questions, but I guess my overall point is, I don't believe that we can say that we should give one thousand, a hundred, or seventy-five, or six until the budget process is much further down the line. Because, you know, as I've said here tonight, we've talked about an indoor center that could cost millions. We've talked about a stormwater utility fee, and we've talked about a lot of other things. We need to make sure we get through our budget process, I think, before we, as a commission, determine what to do about this number. So that would be my, my, my big suggestion. And I don't know where the rest of the commission is on that. And then I've got three or four little questions, and then we'll see whether everybody is on that part of it. My first question is, I believe this account... Correct me if I'm wrong, but if the city want, I'm not saying they, we should, but the city really has no responsibility toward this. It's a county function ultimately, is that correct?
Statutorily, the city can say, "We don't wanna have anything to do with animal control." But if you do say you're gonna have something to do with animal control, then you do have to have somewhere to take the animals. And it's interesting, I've always thought, but despite all the money the chief will void apparently has squirreled away, he has never said he wants to have those animals. But you're right, you're, you know, you, you can get out of the business if you want to.
Right. That's my first question. My second question is, in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, we gave fourteen thousand, seven hundred, which we had been given for a long time. And then all of a sudden, we went to forty-four thousand. And then we bumped it up to fifty-five thousand here lately. Does anybody know why we had such a dramatic jump?
I do.
Thanks, Chief.
Brother Bill Kirkland, representing the, it was an argument very much like this one. The, at the time, the shelter, the majority of...
No, you weren't.
Yes, you were.
Thank you.
At the time, the shelter was experiencing much the same problems they have now. You know, a lot of city animals coming there. The, the amount of contribution was questioned. The cost, and really, the, the cost of doing business was, was quite high, because they were euthanizing a lot of animals. Negotiation was made to, to get a more realistic cost for services. The, the idea at the time, the, the way it was budgeted was always as a subsidy, much like some of the charities that you'll see.
Yeah.
And when you work in the budget process, that'll be asking for more money. It was considered as a nonprofit, a charity. And the, the contract presented it more as a coffee service that they're providing for the city rather than...
And I guess that animal is...
The negotiation was...
Depending on your perspective would be depending on which way you go on that. And my last question is...
And there was one other component to this, sir, and that is, I don't know how long it was prior to two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, but for many years, the veterinarians would participate with the licensing of animals in Frankfurt. And they would keep a small part of the amount that was collected for the license fee, and then deliver the rest to the Humane Society. But the license fee never kept up with the increase in costs. So the ordinance is actually set up to, to bring in what I would say would be a fair amount of money from the licensing of animals, be they cats or dogs. And then the veterinarians would collect that, and then send the, the city share down to the Humane Society. And that way, the people that own the pets are the ones that pay for the pets.
That was one of my questions.
But if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to increase licensing fees so that they're realistic. And instead of being five or seven dollars, something like that, they would have to increase twenty-five dollars a year, or something like that. And, and then if you get the vets involved, of course, people get their dogs vaccinated for rabies or for other diseases on a yearly basis. And when they come in once a year, they get their licenses.
So is the new ordinance gonna have more, is that a part of this?
A, a new ordinance would, the contract would not provide that.
But a new ordinance is good.
An ordinance, you wouldn't have to have a new ordinance. You would just revise the old ordinance, ordinance to increase the fee.
Can we, like, revise the old ordinance to increase the fee, but also put, like, a provision in there? If your pet is not fixed, it's gonna cost you, like, a whole lot more money?
I think it had that.
Did it have that?
Well, we have, the, the current ordinance has a little distinction, but not much. We do wanna come back to you all in, actually, we, we plan on coming back at the March tenth work session with proposed changes to the ordinance. One of the changes is license fees. Now, I, I will tell you, we looked at, as an example, we looked at Lexington's animal code. And Lexington has an eight-dollar license fee for an altered animal, and then a forty-dollar license fee for an unaltered animal. We think that's a good, a good model and a good suggestion. I think that's probably what, we haven't voted on this yet, but that's probably what we are going to propose to, to you all. And that would raise it from, it's currently five dollars for an altered animal, and ten dollars for an unaltered animal. So it'd raise it a little bit for the altered animals, and raise it quite a bit for unaltered. Part of the other thing that we would do is we would request regarding reclaim, owner reclaim fees. And because right now, the way the ordinance reads, an owner can pick up an animal for ten dollars plus a boarding fee. And again, looking at the Lexington code, it's written so that owner picks up the animal, an altered animal, for twenty-five dollars, pays seventy-five dollars if it's unaltered. But also has the choice in paying that seventy-five dollars, if it wants to bring the animal back and have it fixed, it, it doesn't have to pay any more to do that. So that, the fifty-dollar difference, in other words, it's their choice to bring it back and have it fixed, or just take it home and keep it. So those are the kinds of things that, that we do, that we do all propose. And that would, I said as well.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with having the city solicitor sound, bring information to us in March, because evidently you all have already been working on a lot of this, and I appreciate the information here. And you mentioned altered and unaltered.
Fixed.
Okay.
Fixed or not.
At, at first, I thought it might have a broke leg.
Sex change.
I'm clear now.
Spay neuter.
But that's where we're, that's where we're going. It leaves something to explain.
Just one thing, we, we altered when we did the contract, I reckon it was in two thousand and eight and nine. We put an extraordinary feature in there. If we had court-ordered animals that had to be housed for any length of time, we would pay. And it's when, that's when I took a look at the, the charge per animal. We pay seven dollars per day, per animal, for those court-ordered housings. And we've probably spent approximately three thousand dollars a year, average, for the last six years since we've been doing that, on that as well. So we've been paying approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. You know, the fifty-five plus the base fee, plus the extraordinary cost on those animals that, that are court-ordered housings. Just FYI.
Just a quick numbers question. Is this, if I read this right, that for the six months ending twelve thirty-one thirteen, basically, your net was fifty-five to sixty-seven thousand, depending on which line you've used?
On the budget?
Yes, sir.
Total, yes.
And then, and then the year ending six thirty thirteen, sixty-nine to seventy-seven thousand, depending on what line you use?
Yes.
And so y'all are running about ten to thirteen or fourteen cents on the dollar as net income?
Well, I guess you could look at it that way. The, in both cases, what I would wanna call your attention to, though, is that most of the net, net income was from grants and requests, so it wasn't from operations.
Yeah, I looked at that. You're right. The, I think the...
We actually, from operations alone, we, we still run a deficit.
Pretty good-looking numbers.
Break, break even the deficit, just depending on...
Thanks.
If commissioners have questions, looks like we'll discuss some next, the new contract. And so people, so folks understand, this is not an appropriation to an agency. This is an actual contract with the Humane Society for picking up, for animal services, animal control services.
Thank you for...
Thank you all.
And just to be clear, we're just talking about the memorandum of agreement contract with the Humane Society. Did anybody want to discuss any changes to the animal coordinates? 'Cause I know there was some discussion, is that...
Sounds like he's gonna come, come with some suggestions, right, at the March?
They're gonna come with suggestions, but did you, did anybody else?
I mean, we could, if you had any other questions. I mean, I...
I was gonna say, you want to...
I think we have most of them kinda fleshed out, so if you have any, any questions that...
Well, can you project out what you think you'll get as a result of new fees?
To a certain extent, the, the reclaim fees probably actually aren't gonna help a lot, because we've been, say this delicately, we've, we've, we've been charging fees for owners to, to get their pets back now anyway. And we've, we've scaled the difference between an altered, unaltered animal. Those, I guess I would say appropriately, we have to call boarding fees at the present time to comply with the animal code. But they, they've already been a fairly decent portion of our income. You can see, I think it's about, it's about eleven thousand dollars last fiscal year, I think, was income from impoundment and reclaim fees. I don't know that that's gonna change a whole lot based on this new, on this new structure. Licensing should help us some. And, you know, we feel like if we could even double licensing at the higher rate, even looking at that, though, we, so far, I could only see about another five thousand dollars in, in income. And that's if we were able to double it at, at the higher fee structure. So if, if that helps, something like that.
Thanks.
I mean, 'cause part of the problem is, you know, the license is only in the city, not the county. And, you know, part of it's an enforcement issue, because, you know, you're not gonna go door-to-door and ask people to, to renew their licenses or check their licenses. Now, if they, if an animal gets brought to us by the city ACO, and, and the owner wants to reclaim it, and then, of course, we can enforce the license, or check for the license and charge for the license if they don't have it. Sadly, though, I have to tell you, only about ten percent of owners actually reclaim their pets. So, you know, even there, it's, it's somewhat limited as to, as to how much additional income you're, you're really gonna get from... We see that you're gonna get...
I would think the increase in the license would actually have not the effect you're looking for.
The reason why you would increase the licensing fee is so that there would be enough money in it for the vet to be paid for his or her time in issuing the licenses. Because if the license fee is ten dollars, and you pay the vet three dollars for him to issue, or her to issue the license, by the time his employee has taken care of the paperwork, the vet is donating money to the city. And while I'm sure they want to support the city in many ways, the veterinarians probably don't wanna donate money to the city in that manner. They wanna choose when and where they wanna make their donation.
Well, I can update you a little bit there, too. We, I, I have had a discussion with one of the larger practices here about that. You know, would they be willing to, to do more licensing? If, if we could work out some arrangement. And in the one case, and I haven't talked to more than one, but it's a pretty large practice. In the one case, they said that actually their problem, they'd be glad to do the licensing. Their, their problem is that it needs to be incorporated into their software, their existing software. And if they could print the license easily, fill it out and print it easily through their software, they'd be willing to do it. They wouldn't care what they got out of it, actually, as far as the fee part of it. But they don't wanna handwrite anything. So that was actually, in this case, anyway, the big objection. I think that we can't be careful about how much we increase the license fee, you know? And that's why we looked at Lexington. We thought, well, if Lexington's doing eight and forty, we can barely do that. Can we do more than that? Maybe not, you know? So that was sort of the view.
When they, when they, I don't know that everybody knows that that, part of that money goes for the Humane Society, but I know, like, if I'm aware of that, I'm like, oh, yes, please do. Because there's so many strays coming around that, you know, I have this, like, oh, that poor little cat. And, but if I knew that part of my money was helping that poor little cat to be taken care of somewhere other than at my house, that would make me extremely happy. So I don't know if the vets tell people that.
Well, see, the vets don't do the licenses now. The licensing is only done down on Kentucky Avenue.
But if they, if they did, used to tell them...
They used to do it, and the ones that I've talked to indicated that they-
It's not working.
That it was an administrative cost that they weren't paid for.
Okay, so, so the-
For running the city's program.
Okay, so they, we would need to raise that license enough to make it work for a while, but then I think they would need to tell the citizens, part of that is going too, because I think that would make citizens more willing to be a part of paying for that.
Good idea, I mean-
Sir, good idea, sir.
Public relations on that would be, yeah, that's a good idea. Either way.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor had to go make the calls, so I guess we'll go on to-
Oh, okay.
Salem City Properties.
We've been working on our properties, and you have a couple of handouts for you.
Great.
We need some more paper.
Two packets. These are the residential properties, as briefly as possible, I think there's seven listed. There are a couple of lots, how we can sell these, how we can get them off of our hands. We can, you apparently have Century 21 on your contract agreement, sell the rest of the commercial property. We could amend that agreement, tell them, yep, market fees and sell these as well. We can request, do an RFP, and request any and all Realtors to solicit for a contract to market and sell these properties. Or we can, here's just one second. We can ask to put an ad in the paper, seeking sealed bids, see what happens, because the city's doing it ourselves, and then, we can't contact the neighbors until we've gone through some type of a bid process. So if the city did it ourselves, we would add in the paper, listing each property, either automatic, absolute auction, or a sealed bid, and then reject them or accept whatever we got, and then we can call the neighbors. Lastly, do nothing like we've done in the last 12 years I've been here, and just keep mulling on it, and keep maintaining, not selling.
Could you please share how Century 21 had suggested?
Yes, we did discuss with Century 21, met with them, talked about the commercial properties, I threw in the residential properties discussion. They suggested doing, lumping them all in one. One bid, there's a couple of lots that seem buildable, the rest of them really aren't buildable, they're going to have too many easements, they have sinkholes, they have a lot of issues. So to sell all of them, one bid, one owner, they made bid on the two lots that they know they can build on, and they would then have to maintain the other lot. Or they then themselves can contract the neighbors and try to sell them to them or give away. But it wouldn't be our issue, it wouldn't be our liability, it wouldn't be our element. But they believe that's the best way to try and sell them, otherwise you will likely sell two, and that's it, and probably give away the two that we might be able to get for ourselves.
Even if the Century 21 does it, or a realty company does it, they do have to try to sell them by sealed bid or by auction first. And they could do that as Mr. Mueller indicated, I guess sell them all at once, or individually?
The one that was, the one that's being handed out now, the last one, that's a one that was added, it wasn't on the list originally, well, it was on the original research list, it wasn't on the final list, it's now back on the final list, I got a letter from Public Works Today saying-
That's actually going to be advertised in the newspaper on Sunday.
Okay. But it has a sinkhole, and it's unbuildable, so unless they get a bunch of waivers, a lot of patient from the planning commission, it's not buildable. But I wouldn't worry about it, so that's why I made copies of it. And that's all I've got for that, we kind of like have some direction, or see what you want us to do as a whole.
May I ask some questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. When we go about selling properties, which we've never really been very good at, is there any way to set up a plan for the land, like to let people know what the land is good for, such as this property is unbuildable, but if you want to own a lot, do you buy it?
When we sold, when we tried to solicit bids on the commercial properties, we did identify what uses were allowed, the zoning of it, popularity, to increase the value on these, again, there are only, there was going to be a ton of disclaimers, that there would be either sewer easements, drainage easements, the likely of building a structure or even a such a structure is very limited to, if not, not allowed on all the, of the two of the property, maybe three. We still have to finalize, I've gotten the deets for all but three from the city, other departments. One of them has a disclaimer that there shall be no septic tank or system on that property forever and ever, and all its future owners. The others don't have any type of odd disclaimers like that on it. But I still don't have three or four of the deets, so we're trying to get three, we're trying to get those, to see if there's any odd caveats or reverters. But yes, once we're at that point, we would need to identify all of these. Without us surveying it, which is a cost that you will never get back, we would just need to identify that there will be easements, or identify an entire lot as an easement, sewer or drainage purchases, on some of them.
Do we have any surveyors on staff?
No, no, we, no, but there is, Public Works typically uses a surveyor, I don't know if it's like a ongoing professional service contract or not, there's no city staff surveyor, to my eye.
Do we know if they're on contact? Would be able to use the surveyor, maybe just have our own staff kind of survey?
You can't survey-
No?
That licensed surveyor.
Okay, so I guess we don't have a licensed surveyor on staff?
That's right.
Yeah, the answer is no.
I can tell you which ones are going to need an easement, but I wouldn't want to tell you how wide an easement is, without talking to the right folks, and it still has to be drawn eventually, must be just saving the entire lot, it has an easement.
Looks like there could be some really good dog parks in some neighborhoods.
We bought two for a dollar, we bought two for over $60,000.
There's Shinkle Lane and Thornhill Bypass, the one at the Shinkle Lane-
I haven't researched this, no.
Well, that's, those are the ones that were purchased for $60,000, and that was to get the easement access, so that work could be done on the Shinkle Cave in connection with the ongoing sewer work.
Now, you mentioned Century 21, the recommendation, do you have any idea of what, if these were sold as a group, do you have a range of whether it might be in?
No, if they did it, they would do it by sealed bid or auction initially, and if they were unable to sell them in that way, then at that point, you could enter into individual discuss, or into negotiations with individuals or entities, and on an auction or on a sealed bid, you can put a reserve or a floor. And so no one has gone through to say, we think these properties are worth $50,000, and we want a reserve of $20,000. And if someone doesn't offer $20,000 for all of them, we're not going to sell them. That has not been done.
No, I just had one question by this, because you said this would be advertised Sunday, so this one didn't have to go through the same.
This one has already gone, it's going to be advertised for sealed bid on Sunday. We have the right to reject any bids, any or all bids, and this is half a lot with a sinkhole.
Thank you.
Real fast, you know, the truth is, these properties have limited to no value, otherwise somebody would have bought them, or somebody would have contacted us about getting them. But, you know, I just think it's good, if you don't have to maintain them, and somebody else can maintain it, and maybe put them into more productive use, it's worth it. I think, I think the process of the suggestion to amend the contract seems sound to me, we could go ahead and go that route, and then if it, if it doesn't work, we go through the processes, and eventually we'll, you know, sell it to whoever will, whoever will buy it. But trying to get them all sold at once probably makes the most sense, because only two of them have any value. And one would make a nice park for Indian Hills.
Well, any others upcoming?
That's all, I think we had.
Can we just amend our contract then, on Century 21, is that consensus?
Do you want to amend the contract that was, that was bid, and the only bidder that we had on that contract was Century 21, and of course, that was the sale of commercial property, these are the sale of residential properties, and there are many more residential Realtors in Frankfurt than there are commercial Realtors, and do you want to give other people the opportunity to bid on it?
We only had one person bid on commercial.
Well, right, and that's the point, that these are residential properties, so more people might be interested-
I guess that would be the fairest thing, to go ahead and let people bid on it, I don't think there'll be a long line, given those properties.
Doubt that there would either, but-
For my only two, I think are possibly buildable.
But yes, that seems fair.
Okay, there's no objection there.
We'll put together an RFP.
Thank you.
We need to do the community survey presentation. Keep in mind that the length of your presentation is the amount of extra time you spend, I'm just kidding, sorry.
I'll be sure.
Sorry. I just said that because you said that.
Well, most of the information, well, all the information I'm going to go over, you all have already received in the packet that I gave you a couple of weeks ago. So I just wanted to go over a few of the highlights here. As you all know, we randomly selected 10% of our customer base to send us the survey, we just pushed a button on the computer, so they were totally random addresses that these went out to. We sent out a thousand surveys, and we sent those out in mid-November, and we received a 22% return on those, which is not great, but, and so, it obviously is not all encompassing, but just kind of gives us a baseline of where we want to start from. Demographic wise, only 19% of the households that sent in their surveys had children at age 17 or below, 46% of households had citizens that were 65 or older, 86% owned their own homes, and 96% were white or Caucasian. Now, our census numbers say they're actually 77%, opposed to 96% white or Caucasian, so the minorities probably aren't as well represented as they should be. It was a random selection, there's nothing we can do about it, that's what we got.
Well, but also, the minorities may not have, they probably were representing the sample, they just did not respond.
That's very possible.
Because if you notice with some of the responses, well, maybe not all of them.
On the general opinion questions, the first one we asked is, I enjoy living in Frankfurt. As you can see, we got 46% either strongly agreed or agreed with that, so, I'm sorry, 46% strongly agreed and 31% agreed, so that's 87% that said they enjoyed living in Frankfurt, so we were pleased with that number. I received good value for the city taxes I paid, was a little less encouraging, while a large number of citizens say they agree or strongly agreed, a total of 47%, 22% disagreed or strongly disagreed with that comment. Then also, in the survey, we asked people to give their top five priorities. Some people gave five, some people gave one, some people didn't give any, so we just took all of the answers, mushed them all together, and this is what we came up with. So the top five were police safety and security, street and road repair, new pool facilities, communications and leadership, and downtown economy. I went ahead and put the top 10, just to round it out for you all, planning and zoning code enforcement was six, more community events, jobs and economy, taxes and budget, and then fifth, I mean, I'm sorry, 10th was public works, and that included all sanitation, garbage, drainage, sidewalks, we've got a lot of mishmash of different things. So I kind of correlated that with some of the questions that we had about those top five priorities. One was police safety and security, and as you can see, we had a high percentage that were satisfied or high, very satisfied with police safety and security, 73%. And then for the fire department, it was 86% were satisfied or very satisfied, they had 1% that was dissatisfied, and nobody that was very dissatisfied with fire, so good job, Eddie.
I always liked those gaspers, I always said that.
Right, you take a certain deal.
It's a little different impression.
Yeah, save your life, give you a ticket.
For street and road repairs, the combined total of dissatisfied and very dissatisfied was 25%, while the satisfied and very satisfied was only 18%, so that may be something we want to look at. The questions also had a high percentage of neutral or they don't know, that was 37%. So based on some of the comments that we got along with this, also, some of these roads were state roads, that they were talking about as county roads, so I just wanted to point that out, that came out in the comments, that they weren't always talking about city New pool facilities was also one of our, the high priorities, and I wanted to point out on this, that while the quality of recreation facilities was pretty high, 46 satisfied or very satisfied, the maintenance and quality of swimming pools kind of, it was actually 27% were very satisfied or satisfied, and also 27% were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied, so it kind of split right down the middle on that one. For communications and leadership, overall effectiveness of appointed boards and commissions, there were, 28% were satisfied or very satisfied, and 25% were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. And there was also 46% neutral or don't know, which means there may have been a pretty big percentage that didn't kind of contact or don't really know. Planning, and I'm, actually, number five was downtown economy, but we didn't really have any questions that specifically addressed downtown economy, so I went ahead and did number six, which was planning, zoning, and code enforcement. So enforcement of city codes and ordinances, 33% were satisfied or very dis, or, I'm sorry, satisfied or very satisfied, while 23% were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. And there were also 44% that were neutral and didn't know, so they probably are not familiar with code enforcement. And in talking back and forth with the statistics professors at KSU, they said that areas of concern may be anything that's either 20% or more dissatisfied or very dissatisfied. So we pulled the ones that were, and some, they're not, a lot of them aren't way over 20%, but just wanted you to kind of get a look at the ones that were maybe of some concern, we may want to take a look at, and as you can see, they're probably ones-
Rebecca, is that in here somewhere?
Um, no, it's not.
I didn't think so, okay, so I was asking.
So maintenance of city infrastructure's in there, effectiveness of, well, some of them you've already seen, visibility and access to elected officials, and maintenance and quality of swimming pools. Those are the areas you might want to look at. To end on a good note- So I just wanted to point out, there were also some, a lot of areas that we ranked very high in. Police protection, ambulance service, control of nuisance animals, maintenance of city parks, museum, collection of garbage, recycling and yard waste was 75% satisfied or very satisfied. And overall, customer service was 50%. So that's all I have.
So how many people responded? Two hundred and ten or so?
About 220, yeah.
Okay. How many did you send out?
A thousand.
So how many, how many did we, how many did we need to get returned statistically to even be able to say much of anything?
Well, I think 22% is what they say is a good number, but I, I mean, I would have liked to got more.
Could you check with somebody that's a statistics person or statistician and see if the random sample we used and the percentage we got back is reliable enough or valid enough to make any conclusions?
Sure.
I think you can see trends here, but I'm a little nervous about doing much based on the response, although this is excellent work that you did. I wish more people had responded. But if you could find that out, that'd be great.
Okay.
Did we do, and I don't remember this. People that throw those in, they, they didn't put their name on them.
No, it was totally a.
So how did we know? That's my question.
How do you knock on the house and sort it out?
They, we did demographics at the end. They, they, it was optional. They couldn't, they didn't have to put it on.
That's what I was going to say. So out of that demographic response, is that a percentage of people who responded to that or were somewhat blank and so you totaled the numbers? Like, what's the raw?
It's just the percentage that actually answered those questions. And the packet that you got actually had for each question, how many responses you got for that specific question.
Do we have raw data compared to the percentages?
Mm-hmm.
When I say raw data, people who filled out or who didn't put down answering questions such as the demographic part, say like, 220 people filled out and out of those 220 people, X percent were this. And so we can look at the raw data to see like the, it's almost like the regression analysis of trying to extrapolate out of that. Because it seems like it's a disproportionate representation, not that any, not anybody's fault.
You know, what I think is.
Statistically, it's just like, I don't know. And typically, if we were looking at a margin of error of four or so percent, I would, I think you've got to get around close to 500 and some people to respond for that confidence level. And, and Commissioner Bowers?
I just think what's most interesting about it is, on so many of those items, the neutral. And I wonder if that's like, because they might really be don't knows or, you know?
See, I'm just concerned you left out a bunch of my friends, because I would think our numbers would have been higher if they would have filled that out. That's what I'm, no, I'm just kidding.
But see, your friends are involved in government, right?
Because my friends probably did it.
You got a mayor, may is great.
You got a mayor, may is great.
That's the only one, though. It's the only one.
Well, saying like, there's just one.
Another one says, well, may or may always be our mayor. That's a good one.
I was disappointed in me, I got that one.
I'm just kidding.
They like Steve in that same comment.
Steve.
And you.
And they're, they're paying taxes to you.
So if we could find that out, then we, and then it, it looks to me like we do have some trends here where there's some pretty strong areas that we, people think we're doing well at, perhaps some pretty strong areas that we might want to look at a little closer. I think it's good work, thank you.
You didn't save the handwriting on us, did you? But said, the good thing.
I do have them filed, right?
That's on public record, right?
Rebecca, we appreciate, I'm sorry. We appreciate.
And it was a good opportunity to work with our university.
I was very pleased, though, to see that the police and fire and public safety side
was, was doing so well, especially with, with the issues of all of the types of crimes where people are smashing grand parts of things and all that. So we're very proud of all of our departments. And the thing with the potholes, there's a lot of times when people get confused on what's a city street and what's a state road. I, I will say, I know that our public works department is always keeping up with the maintenance of, of streets and roads. And I know that they, they do a very good job of that. So thank you to all, all of the departments. And the thing on the pools, we know that that's going to be rectified, hopefully. But again, congratulations to everyone who makes this organization what it is. And to have the commission, we, we appreciate the street department.
He didn't want you to feel bad, Colin.
And the garage.
I know, man. Y'all be jumping up and down on that one.
And something I felt, I'd forgotten, when we mentioned that, when our, our soul hearts are out, the, the garage is always maintaining a staffing level there to keep the people running. So those folks are also unsung heroes in all of this. And our police and fire folks are out in very bad conditions sometimes. Thank you all again. I know the commission has expressed that many times. Now, we can go back. Does anybody have anything on the tentative agenda that we discuss? I think we probably.
I'll have a certain one, so I think it got changed, so we can discuss it.
You're talking about 7.9?
Mm-hmm.
We put it under old business.
Thank you.
I don't know if it'll be 10.1. It'll probably be 10.1, but you don't know.
9.1.
9.1.
Or, I don't know.
Well, let's just check. What is it going to be? 9.1 or 10.1? But anyway, either, it's in an old business. So staff reports, commish, sorry, city manager's report.
Mr. Sloan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scal?
Yes, I do. We were, we were approached at the end of January, there's a new round of 319 grants, which are non-point source. We've been strongly encouraged by Division of Water to apply for one of those. So myself, Tom and Rebecca sat down and we have thrown out to the Division of Water one of the projects that came out of the sea, Greening America's Capitals, we're blank for a minute, which is the renovation of Dollar Grant Park. We've, we've given that to Division of Water to see if that meets their criteria. What we'd like to do is, if they tell us it meets their criteria, grants have to be, or grant applications have to be submitted by March 14th. So if they tell us it meets the criteria, we'd like to do a late add at the, for the 20, 4th meeting, whatever, February. We should hear that back either later this week or early next week. If they tell us it doesn't, then obviously we don't have a grant to submit and we won't put it on. But we're hoping they'll tell us it meets their basic criteria and we can get that submitted.
Thank you. Do it. Any objections?
Couple of weeks ago, we handed out our annual department report. If you want me to provide any more detail or have it on a work session, be happy to. Otherwise, shoot me your questions or you can ask them now. Typically, we provide that same report every year and each year it gets less and less as far as presentation changes.
It's a good picture.
We do, we change it every year. For our department.
So.
Good.
Is that the, I assume that was our, that's our typical collection rate? $1 on the hundred?
On the liens?
Mm-hmm.
The prior year was 1,200 and something.
So you came up to 2,000, over 2,000?
It was like 7,000.
Out of, what, 200 and something?
Yes. But your efforts in October, November to extend the time period got us four and a half, $4,500.
Really following that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Director Fields.
I would just like to say, you know, thank you to the street crews. They've done a great job. And also, as the mayor said, the garage is spending in. Even had some of our solid waste drivers come in and help out simply because of the amount of time that they're spending with snow and salt.
Ms. Hall? Mr. McCarty?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Moore?
I can either have this prepared for the voting meeting in February, or we can do it in March, but there is a provision in the statute which allows you to, by ordinance, file a foreclosure action against delinquent taxpayers en masse. So instead of filing the single case against one taxpayer, you can file one complaint against 20 or 30 taxpayers. And it's a statutory procedure, it'd be cheaper. And I can prepare the ordinance for this, this voting meeting, or I can have it in March. So I'd kind of like to do it for this voting meeting, but of course, you all haven't had a chance to look at it, so I'm happy to do it in, in March, too, if that's your pleasure.
I'd rather do March if I could, because when I leave here tonight, I won't be back until the Saturday before the next one. I have people in the room. The house is guarded.
Okay. We'll have it for March now.
That's great. You can do that. That gets a lot of smooch.
City clerk, you want one?
Yes, and I don't know.
Anybody who's going to be out of town this summer for vacation, it's available to all of our citizens.
It is, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I forgot to thank our emergency management director and deputy directors for being out that they've been dealing with, too. And the plant board is pretty much the water. And what's, you know, I was interested in the survey results, talked about the public safety issue. I will say, I just called your attention because of the report we got from the city managers that showed the, the great work that all of our departments are doing, but in particular, it seems like kind of an unsung statistic is that the Frankfurt Police Department has been involved with more arrests in terms of drug-related cases than all other law enforcement agencies in our community combined, think more than double. And also, those cases that have gone to court have been solid cases in terms of prosecution.
Yeah. That's one of my new businesses.
Oh, we're not done?
Oh, my own commission. Where the hell? We never did new business.
No, we did not.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm about ready to go.
I've got to come on.
Let's go to new business. Finish up, piggyback on that.
All right. I'll piggyback on, I just, I talked to chief today and I, I really urge him and our police department to really make a push toward more positive public relations, because I think there's an unknown story, and that is the story that our police department's doing an excellent job. There's a strong, a high apprehension rate, there's a high conviction rate. And if you just read the newspaper, I think you might have a different perspective. So I believe that we need to start tooting our horn a little bit better, even though that's not the chief's, you know, that's not a thing people feel comfortable with. But I think the community needs to know more about what our city police is doing and the great job they're doing. So that's my follow-up to that.
I didn't look on your notes, I'm sorry.
That's all, no, was it?
I copied in class today.
That's all right. I, I copy all the time.
I was just saying it because you're a teacher.
Well, yeah, we usually give you a zero when you do that. But anyway, yeah, we don't want to give you a zero. Two quick things on new business. The, I would like to explore a little bit on the Frankfurt Plant Board and the, I know that they, that they don't pay rent here, and in return, we don't pay rent on fire hydrants or something. Is that right? How does that work, Mr. Moore?
We pulled these figures together. There's actually a sheet of paper that has all the details. I think it'd be better for us to get to the sheet.
Okay. Did you get that, too, is?
We could, I can't, it seemed to me, maybe Jeff had those figures at some point in time, the former city engineer.
We pay 136 a year for fire hydrants. That's what it's.
Pay what?
136 a year.
They reduced the price at one point.
Yeah, it was a little higher. It's about $4 and something per hydrant.
Right.
Per month. And there's about seven, about 700 hydrants. So we're talking about, what, so four something, that's 2,800 a month. There, there's some other fees and it, 136, I think, is what's budgeted.
If we could get a copy of the numbers?
I've got that, plus it'll show that up until three years ago, the plant board paid a payment in lieu of taxes to the city.
I was going to ask you about that.
Historically, and I believe that the ordinance that created the plant board contained a provision requiring them to make a payment in lieu. And their worst, when they quit making, paying the payment in lieu, I think there was a brief discussion about paying rent, but there was not interest in the commission to push that issue. But we can put that information out, pull it out of the plant board file and send it to the city manager and.
And he can send it out to us?
He can send it to you all.
Well, I appreciate that. I got just one more, and it's on communication. And I, I, and I don't know what we need to do, so I've just asked the commission to just jump in and say what we need to do. But, but a number of times, when we're trying to get an item on the agenda, like, let's say Commissioner Haddon or Commissioner Hines or somebody sends out, sends out something to the city manager and then he, yeah, the city manager sends something out and says, we'd like to put such and such on the agenda. The problem is, is we're not responding either yea or nay, so that we then don't, either don't have it on the agenda, or we have to bring it up under older new business. So I would ask what process we want to use in order to communicate with each other to put items on the agenda? Because the process we're using now doesn't seem to work.
Well, let, may I just clarify that it's limited on who responds?
Right. So if we need to use another process, I'm fine with that. I just need to know what to do so that we can get things on the agenda.
Well, and of course, let me answer, too. Of course, if, if we don't have something on an agenda, if there are a majority of commissioners that want to add something to an agenda, for example, the day of, all we have to do is, is the commissioner can add something if there's enough support, if that commission would do so.
You're exactly right.
So that's, that checks and balances.
I'm thinking of in terms of if you're trying to get somebody in here, like, we had one this last week. We were trying to get the state representative and the state senator, and, and we didn't have enough response to do yea or nay. So when it's, when it's something that would require people or require staff preparation or whatever, I just think we need to figure out what method we want to use and then just use it. And I'm fine with whatever the method is. But we've got too many, you know, because primarily, we're trying to do these things by email, and, and too, and too often, we don't have enough responses to email to work. So if we need a new method, then we just need to do it.
I guess maybe somebody can just, everybody think about it a little bit.
Okay.
Mayor, you can have something put on the agenda yourself, correct?
Well, I think the way we've got it now, commissioners can.
It takes three commissioners, where the mayor.
Right.
So like, if people wanted the representatives here, mayor, you can choose to, if one person wants something on the agenda, I say put it on there. I mean, can you just contact the mayor and say, please put this on the agenda? The city manager or the mayor can put something on the agenda. Three commissioners, the city manager or the mayor can do that. Am I right on that, mayor?
Well, I think the way the rule would be, and I have to look at it again, is the city manager will come up with some agenda items and then send that through the city clerk, and the city clerk will send it out to us as a preliminary agenda. And then if you want to add something or not have something on this, the trouble is, when something gets on, it's pretty difficult to really take it off. But the way, the checks and balances should be that there should be, if, for example, somebody refused to put something on the agenda, all you've got to do is, when the meeting starts, is just say, I'd like to add this on the agenda for support.
Well, I'll just say, you know, I know people get mad because I'm not on email all day long, but I'm just going to say that I'm on email all day long, and when I go home, I'm not going to sit on the email all night. So I'm going to check. So, like, if people wanted the representatives here, mayor, you can choose to, if one person wants something on the agenda, I say, put it on there. I mean, can you just contact the mayor and say, "Please put this on the agenda"? The city manager or the mayor can put something on the agenda, three commissioners, the city manager, or the mayor can do that, am I right on that, mayor?
Well, I think the way the rule would be, and I have to look at it again, is the city manager will come up with some agenda items, and then send that through the city clerk, and the city clerk will send it out to us as a preliminary agenda, and if people want to add something, or not have something on this, the trouble is, when something gets on, it's pretty difficult to really take it off. But the way, the checks and balances should be that, there should be, if, for example, somebody refused to put something on the agenda, all you've got to do, when the meeting starts, is just say, "I'd like to add this on the agenda for support."
Well, I'll just say, you know, I know people get mad, because I'm not on email all day long, but I'm just going to say that I'm on email all day long, and when I go home, I'm not going to sit on the email all night, so, I'm going to check my email, at certain periods, when it's convenient to check my email, and if anybody else wants to know what I think about an issue, and it's not timely enough for you, then you're welcome to call me and say, "Commissioner Bowers, would you like this on the agenda?", and I'll say yes or no, but I am not going to chain myself to the screen 24/7, I'm pretty much chained there with my job, and I do usually spend Sunday afternoons returning emails, but if that's not timely enough for someone, I've got a telephone number, and that is my preferred method of communication when it's not KSU. So, if somebody wants to know what I think about something on the agenda, feel free to call me. What I'm likely to tell you is, is if you want it on the agenda, sure, let's talk about it, I have no problem with anything going on the agenda, whether I agree with, you know, what the outcome's going to be or not, but I don't think we should keep things off of the agenda if one person wants it discussed, or two people want it discussed.
We are, we are, we are doing that, so.
Okay, well.
So, so, so if it comes from the city manager, then I, then are you, are you, and I'm fine with it, are you saying that then, then they, he, or Ramona, or somebody should, or if it's one of us trying to get somebody on, we just need to call you?
Just call you.
Yeah, evidently, this is about me, and so.
No, it's not, no, 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 this email thing is, is not, it's not just you.
The problem with, the problem with email is, one has to be parked at the screen in order to give a real-time response, and, and, you know, the telephone, you just heard mine ring a while ago, you know, somebody's wanting you, my, my, my computer doesn't call me, and I don't use my KSU computer for government email, or private email, I don't use it that way, so the only email I use for city government email is my home computer, and I'm not home real often, so, call me if you want to know what I think, but I'm going to tell you, if you want it talked about, I'm all for it, being on the agenda, let's talk about it. I think we need to talk about more issues than fewer issues, so, that's, that's my, that's my take on it, but, everybody's got my phone number, right?
But, okay, I got it, and it's not, it's just not, not just you, Commissioner Bowers, we, we get, but we get each, and, and, and I guess we need to then prioritize the emails that we get, but we get emails all day long.
Yes, we do.
And they're not just agenda items. All right, I'm done.
Just appreciate you, I.
Well, I was going to, but I might extend the meeting, so.
I think we're almost done. All right, is there any other new business?
I have one. I'm, darn. I've had a citizen complaining about a neighbor's lights, and I would just like to direct staff to explore what maybe other cities do, I know that there is restriction on what commercial lights to do, can do, and what residential lights can do, but I'm sure other cities are doing things, and I would just like to ask staff to just explore the idea of, there's limitations on how high wattage residents can have on their homes, or directions of which they can be projected, if they're shining deliberately at people's homes.
I think that's a same call, too.
So, I, you know, just about six months or so, just explore it, and just asking for some information to come back to us, if you can maybe come back in October or something.
Is that going to be?
It'll be soon.
Is that going to be?
I know that some cities actually do, do require, because they want to keep the, the idea of being able to see stars, so that.
It's kind of like our noise problem, that we get calls, people with noise problems, it's kind of, it's kind of a nuisance thing.
It is, it is, but if you have something in writing, and this is, and we're able to, to see that the wattage is too much, or it's directional, then we can actually do something versus, just something to explore.
And we're going to have more of those, for instance, in my backyard, there's this big plant board light that just makes the nighttime look like daylight, and it was put there, I don't know how many years ago, but now that there's all of these new, you know, we have new residents and every, it's going to be more of a problem, is we keep building on top of each other.
So, maybe it's something we should look at, or not look at, but.
I think so.
Thank you.
Did you think that it's flowable? I think it researches.
Thank you. Done.
That was easy. Where's that button?
We should have one.
You gave this away?
I'll make a motion.
You came in here.
We might have to, I'm sure, in discussion.
Who seconded it?
I'm saying, hi. Hi, I'm Billy Paul Jackson. How's it happening?
Hi. Thank you.